New Quincy Public School crew team, together with Thayer Academy Crew Team. We've been working collaboratively with those departments. This structure will actually accommodate both of those. It's going to have room for expansion of the crew boats. The building itself will accommodate public access, bathroom facilities inside, storage for all those folks during the wintertime. Ability to maintain those boats inside is the structure in storage of kayaks and canoes for the program. This appropriations request includes the design of permitting remaining to get this facility up and running. The permitting associated with this is streamlined. We can be just before the port and the Conservation Commission have temporary floats. They'll be mounted on the surface and on the pilings so we can get through the permitting and grab the case with the hope of actually breaking around the summer possible and having the system up running for the fall program. Any questions?
Mr. Murphy, obviously representing District 6, proposed and been part of the conversation for a while. And you talk about corporate citizens, I mentioned nonprofits and other folks getting involved in the city. There's not enough I can say about Jay Catherine, who invested into the city from the play for all playground right down to the Monastery proposal. As it was initially presented, just a little backstory, it was originally a coast, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like a coast guard using the building. It was the goal.
A life-saving station.
A life-saving station. So essentially the thought was they would basically transplant that onto site. And then after further review, Mr. Catherine stepped up like he normally does and said, you know what? Let's just build a high-end, high-quality, world-class destination for the crewing folks over at the schools as well as with the Thayer Academy. And I know in fact, back doors, you're already well situated there. And one of the thoughts, just to kind of keep this all in perspective, was the accessibility that we made to residents in off Peak Avenue. So consequently, wouldn't it be neat to take a kayak out down in the Flow River with your family? And I think that's kind of a progression of where this is going.
My family would sink with me.
They might sink the kayak.
They would not trust me.
I have not tried boat in the past couple of years. We could potentially do it, but I guess my point is kudos to Mr. Catherine as well as the mayor and us working together to sort of make the first piece. I don't know if there's any questions around that, but probably over, we know the dialogue of Mr. Murphy is the leading consultant. So questions to Mr. Murphy?
Just a comment that this, as well as the previous presentation, really elevates our city to just a totally different level. And I think, you know, something like this is just so unique to, you know, where we are as a community. And I just think it's such a great thing, it's a great opportunity for our city. And, you know, again, you know, as Congressman Finn said earlier, you feel free to disagree on certain things, but I do think that these designs and not only this vision for our city, and particularly this project just elevates our city to the level where I always believe we are and I think a lot of the folks up here do as well. And I think, you know, it really puts us in a place where we should be. So I think it's exciting. Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? We're on Mr. Murphy, Counsel, of course.
Thank you, Chairman Paul. I do want to speak ahead of you as the board counselor.
I appreciate that.
So if you want, I can yield if you want your time.
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that. So through you, Mr. Murphy, this project combines two of the things I'm quite passionate about, history and voting in the waterfront. Ward 1 does have the majority of the town river. Where those who will be launching the ward 2 get to explore a lot of the water, coastal zone of Ward 1. And in particular, one of the sites we've talked about getting access to is the Broadman of Marsh. We're restoring, you know, over 20 acres. We've had substantial improvement to the wildlife in the area of a variety of species of birds. But when we look at a city, which is a large coastal, we have very limited public access to the waterfront. So when we look at this location, you and I have had multiple conversations about the designated port area and having us in the middle of that needing to have recreational access in an area that does have recreational voting. You know, my kids are standing out of town river Yucca. I really appreciate the opportunity to get kayak and canoeing into the town river. It's really a spectacular opportunity for those who don't have the proprietary own voting votes and being able to provide public amenity. So I really think that's terrific. I do, also, I've seen the original coast guard station, you know, Mr. Catherine has a store at the boatyard. I guess I was just looking for, this is design funding, what you're showing with this rendering is just kind of for concept viewing, right? This isn't ex-mound linear feet of here of boats, slips, it looks like it has like boats tied up in bigger boats that go to the last rendering, last side. Right, so when you see existing view and exposed view, with those floats coming out, is that looking over towards like Bay Point Marina? That's why we have the bigger boats there?
That's looking in a subtle direction from the lower part of the park.
Right, so I just, for the rendering purposes, it looks like we have bigger boats there. They're talking about maybe like kayak launch in rowy shells, right?
It's just rowy shells, actually.
Just confused by your.
It's the marina in the background.
The marina in the background, right, so we're looking towards Bay Point?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I was looking to see if that was what you were trying to be. I didn't have any impression we're designing slips here, just wanted to be clear. You know, I really, this is a good project and I appreciate Mr. Catherine, one of the biggest coastal businesses in the Commonwealth and the public of the country, being able to do this project in his own backyard. So please extend my gratitude and thank you.
Mr. Murphy, I guess as we close, significant willingness to invest private money for the boat house in the tune of.
Jay, if you could give us a number, but the concept of our building and the traditional design is a major question Jay's agreed to. The building is internal in the tiers and the plans. It's significant, it's not a small amount of money. I think you have a part of it, I would serve that for Mr. Catherine.
Sure, public, private partnership coming together, maybe something happens. Appreciate you being on the voyage out here this evening. And next, I apologize to the committee, you're on the agenda, Backson Park, Slide Act, the Monastery. So we're just navigating along the Slide Act. So Mrs. France is going to give us an update on Backson Park.
Okay, I can't even react to that. I have one last question.
Oh, please concentrate on my voice. I'm a little bit more. I was looking and I think I could put the gentleman in the background. You know, the one issue that I have is this goes back in ways, and this is not a reflection on what I think about the value of the project in any way. Last time I raised this, it was kind of taken in that vein. But the mayor had actually alluded to it in his presentation, is that this occurs still within a designated port area, which again, is my understanding of a restriction, restricts it to commercial marine use of one type or the other. He didn't seem to indicate that those issues have been resolved yet. And I guess if you could give us an update in terms of where you think the feasibility is. Remember last time, the BMA came back and said, no, because it is a designated port area. So I'm just curious as to what progress is being made in that area.
We, as the mayor's always done with us, he wants it done right. He wants it done right the first time. So when we went to the permitting agencies to resolve this, our county did this permanent. The DPA is a restrictive area for non-recreational areas, the way it's designated right now. So Mr. Catherine and Mr. the mayor asked us to try to push through and how we get to that DPA permitting scheme. And it's very different and it's a lengthy process. The mayor was willing to go through it. However, as we probe and went through it, the coastal zone reinsurance, the management of the DPA set this as an exemption or, you know, you allow to put a temporary float system in providing you are putting experiments in, driving piles. So the pier system they'll put out will be under the exemption and allowed in the DPA to say, basically, temporary, you're anxious, you're on the surface, they're not permanent.
So that'll be a function of the design, so to speak, and as tied into the progress.
That's right.
Well, thanks, exactly. That's a great explanation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Then before we dismiss Mr. Murphy, you know, the question, thanks again there, Mrs. France.
Good evening, Counselors. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Park Department, excuse me, for improvements to Backson Park that will continue the work that was outlined in the Backson Park Master Plan going back to 2009. I think we supplied you a copy of that Master Plan. I hope it's legible. I can get new copies and co-ads and so forth from the designer, if any of you would like them. Speaking specifically on maybe the differentiation between want and need, I think that what we're asking for in terms of the Backson Park program this year is a need rather than just a want. We have the area up there that was formerly by the city, the high schools. That area has been capped. The condition it was going to be left in under the capping scenario would have meant that it was just open space. So since the cap was put on there, the city, DPW contractors with extra bill, such as the field project, have been filling and leveling that piece of property up to the point where we have approximately two acres of it that will be usable for something. Now, regardless of its actual use, it needs to be closed out. It's been a construction site for four years. It's time to close it up. The mayor would like to have that project put to bed. And so what we've done is we've looked at different fields throughout the city and said, what other fields do we need? What kind of field should we put at Backson Park? And what we've come down to is another men's softball diamond, lighted men's softball diamond. And what that would do, not only give us another softball diamond, but it would also take redundant use off of another location so that that location could also become more usable because it wouldn't be competing for the outfield space on that park. So what we've done is we've outlined a program in your backup. The area of the park that we're talking about is identified in the Master Plan as the Meadows. When the Master Plan is done, it could have been just, you know, an open area, not pat, not mowed, whatever. And so it was identified from the beginning without any special end goal in mind, and it was called the Meadows. But now we're going to take the Meadows and we'll take the field that was put out there, level it, grade it, put in a backstop, put in a diamond, put in new lights. And another parking lot up there right across from the Backson One Men's Softball Diamond, which is a lit softball diamond. And that will become our goal for that piece of the Backson Park. Now, on your handout, you'll see that there's a new tennis court outlined in the budget under the Meadows. Just since this has been talked about the last week or so, I think that we have some people up in the Backson Park area who feel that they would prefer to have more work on the trails. And so the mayor's perfectly happy with that. It's always, there's more need up there than we can possibly fulfill. The original Master Plan in 2009 was over $5 billion plan. With the work that we've done, has been wall work to establish, re-establish the scenic historic walls on Backson Park Road. We've done some trail work along with the Boy Scouts and the Quincy Park Conservancy has paid for some of that. And we're at the point now where the next project after the lighted wall diamond would be to keep working with the neighbors in the area and do some trail improvements. That would be it for the Backson Park, over $800,000.
So thank you very much, Mr. France. Just a couple of things, I was wondering coming in here, what defined the need for a softball field or baseball field? I was thinking baseball or softball. And I was assuming that conversation came from the Park Board?
Yes, not necessarily the Park Board. It came probably more from a conversation between myself and the mayor. What happened, we have several fields, several locations, where we have a baseball diamond and a softball diamond on the same location. And because the softball diamond is there, they have to stop playing baseball at a certain time. So this would give us a little bit more flexibility for the baseball diamonds, which we have quite frankly more demand for full-size baseball diamonds right now. And then we would move the, we would move the softball off of those, or one of those other fields. And so we end up with a full-time four-use softball field that would be lit. And we would also have a baseball diamond that could be used for into the evening. Whether it was lit or not, we have Kincaid, which is a lit, which is a lit field that because there's softball in the opposite corner, we really can't, excuse me, we really can't get full utilization out of the diamond more than lights because men's softball is there. And then we have O'Rourke, and we have Bishop Field that are pretty much the same thing. We have a full-size baseball field in one quarter, and we have a softball diamond in the other corner. And as soon as the guys show up to play softball, the kids can't play baseball. So that's the mix that we're trying to deal with as far as determining what the best location is the best and highest use for each one of these.
So are you solving that issue on the Meadow with softball diamond and a baseball diamond? Or is that just a softball?
Just a softball.
Okay. And you said it's what, two acres yourself roughly?
It's roughly two acres. There's a total of three acres up there, but the other acre is pretty deli and has a detention bond in it that would make it a little bit difficult to really develop property. So we would take what is called Meadow and could have been a lacrosse field, could have been a dog park, could have been.
Soccer field.
Soccer field, lots of different things. But right today, the highest possible use that we can determine for that area would be a softball diamond.
Sure, and I think we rely on your expertise here. Your department and the Park Board to assess those needs for just city councilors. But myself, you know, I live in that area, close enough anyway, to spend a lot of time with my family. At the playground, which I was at actually yesterday, and it's just amazingly transformative what's happened up there for those folks that have kind of followed the Master Plan. And that's a document that was driven by the neighborhood. And recently I had the opportunity to attend a Pensive Neighborhood Association meeting. One neighbor is still with us, he was with us the other last meeting too, so thank you, little guy. A lot of passion up there, a lot of excitement, a lot of focus and continuing, you know, progression, if you will, up at Backson Park, because it is over 90 acres of open space and literally something forever. You talk about a public-private partnership. I see Ms. McBurney down in the back, she was part of the Park Conservancy when we actually started putting together money for the Red Diamond. I unfortunately drew the short straw and raised about $10,000 practically by running the Boston Marathon. But it was stuff like that that engaged through the process. My only question is, I love those trails, and that's really the feedback that I get out of the neighborhoods. You have resources, you want investment, you love going into the park. How do we make that more of a flying experience? My only question, because I know what happens, and it's really, really sad, but folks from time to time, for whatever logic goes through their brain, decide to, you know, pull on the trail and drop off an old TV or do a construction site dump. It's really sad, but as we think about it, I'm grateful for it. I'm grateful for the investment into the neighborhood, no question. But as we go forward, are we taking into consideration the amount of maintenance that will have to take place to make sure that the trail's there, it's going to stay defined by the swimming wood chips?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, and we keep these, you know, easily accessible as humanly possible. I know that falls under your park.
Sure.
Or if you, you know, we've had the conversation, that's an issue, a reality, unfortunate one, a reality that takes up there, so I, the question was, thank you. Want to make sure that, you know, the resources we invest are going to be able to be monitored and kept up.
Yes, excuse me, I think that what's occurred, the Red Diamond Trail is probably three years old now. Maybe two or three years old, and it's just now.
Three or four years out of marathon shape, so yeah. I agree with that.
And, you know, the Boy Scouts cleared the trail and cut the brush and so forth. And then we hired a contractor and what we did was we put down a filter fabric to keep stuff from growing up through the wood chips. So today, even though the wood chips may be deteriorating, they rot naturally. At least we don't have to go back and start from square one to maintain those trails. So even now, we have some money left over from the Conservancy that, and we've been stockpiling chips. You may have seen the chips up in the parking lot there. When the forestry department takes trees down or cuts up brush or whatever, they run it through the chipper and we take it up there and we stockpile it. And we'll have the contractor, the original work, come back out and replenish the chips on all of those trails. And I think that that's a really inexpensive way to maintain. The other, right, the other issue that you mentioned is an issue that we have all over the city and I don't think will ever go away, and that's dumping. We have a pageant field, we have it everywhere in the city.
Sure, you're, I mean, the only one that you see though is you have the park.
Yeah. So we just, you know, we need people to call us and we get out there as soon as possible. The one thing that has been a little bit more of a problem at Backson Park than maybe most of our other parks is homeless camps and as part of the trail work and so forth. We did a lot of grazing of the lower branches of the trees so that we could see out into the park and see whether or not those blue tarks really stand out, you know, when people are living in.
You know, I know Counsel, I have a question, but you really just jogged positive memories in my public service career and it's watching the Eagle Scout enthrue, basically lay the ground for that trail. And then just thinking through the whole project, considering Paul Truett, I'm sitting there and I'm watching him, you know, basically achieve the highest designation or honor of scouting. And it was down in the park in his backyard and all the people from the community that worked together on that. I'm just, I'm shaking my head and saying, this is just amazing. Exactly why, truly got into public service and it was just a little magical experience. So a little sci-fi there.
Yep.
Counsel, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the bottom field, on Backson, we used to have the old logs and they'd hit a home run, hit them over the logs. Anyways, they used to play Saint John's baseball when I was a kid, before I got on the day to play at Quincy Police. But when you said, is this a need or a want, I do agree with you. I think this is a need. And the reason why I think it's a need is, being on Parkland Recreation, like four and five years ago, Eric Walsh as well as Mrs. Powders and Mrs. Consign, there was always a problem with getting softball leagues. There was a huge demand, we could never fit them all in to the ball fields. Because we had the other kids that wanted to start. I'm thinking about the Breck and I'm thinking about the House of Commandants that want to get on the field. They have to go to Brill Field at the beginning because the softball league's still going. So I do see that there's a need out there for the softball, and then being it lit up would be really nice. And to piggyback on the fact of the tennis courts, we see a lot of tennis courts around the city that have deteriorated. They haven't been refurbished or they haven't been reconstructed. So of the tennis courts, how many tennis courts will be put in? Will it be one, two, three, four? How many courts?
If we go to what the neighbors want and do trails, it would be trails instead of the tennis courts.
Tennis courts, okay.
Yes.
You see, it has one there, a new tennis court. So if you want to not do the tennis courts, you can go with the trails.
That has been the request of the mayor since this was brought up.
Okay, I get it. Well, I will tell you, Cally Owens is behind you and she's done a lot of the trails with Counsel Crowe as well as Footsteps for Backson, and she's done a lot of different stuff throughout the city. So, you know, I think it's important when people show up here with a need. I mean, there's a lot of people that say, well, I didn't have enough time, I couldn't make it down. But when people show up here, like they did tonight with this, basically called the Open Public Forum, came up and spoke, that's a dedicated person. When you hear about the people that are backing you right now, those are the people that are really involved in the city. And then they speak volumes when they come into the city council chambers and they spend their time in here. And I see her, she's behind you right now. So I think that's an important factor for her. So that's important to me, when I look out into the audience to see who is here, who is still here at 9:15. So, you know, this is, when we get them down to needs and wants, this is one of the items I look at and say, we definitely have a need for this in City Quincy. So when we get to whatever we're going to do tonight, I'm going to be in support of this. I don't know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, Ron, Mr. France, Counsel, the egg?
Thank you, Mr. France. My question was actually just to, just want to talk to you about the tennis court. You mentioned earlier in your presentation that you're going to go based off of what residents want and at times want the tennis court. So out of that $100,000, are we just keeping that there as part of the ask? Or are we giving away for networking, planning to do a back-up?
It would be replaced dollar for dollar. The way I understand it, would be replaced dollar for dollar with an ask for trail improvements.
Okay, just one question. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Mr. France on Backson? Mr. France on the Dog Park?
We saw all of ours out of my office, so all I've heard from the past six months or so is Dog Park, Dog Park, Dog Park. And for years before that, Dog Park has been, there you are, right. So for years before that, it was an issue, probably a device. So for years before that, it was an issue, probably a device issue because the Dog Park people couldn't figure out why Quincy didn't have a Dog Park. And we said, because we can't find any place to put it. The mayor's found a place to put it and it's city property. It's a great location in terms of something that can be devoted to a Dog Park with very little interference with any other use. There is no other use at that piece of property. I don't think we could build ball fields there either. We could certainly put walking trails there, but I think that as part of the Dog Park, eventually the dog shelter, that we could put walking trails there for people to walk their dogs on as well or people who didn't have dogs could walk there. But it's a nice location because it's a massive piece of property. It's not easily developed, it's going to take a lot of money to put the road in and so forth. But it's a great location, somewhat not quite as centrally located as Pageant Field, but I think it'll be a great spot for us. Lisa's done a lot of work with her committee on the Dog Park itself. Would you like to speak to-
I'm sure I can answer any questions.
If you look at the picture backup, it has the request for the funding for the Dog Park itself. Again, we need to make sure that everybody understands that this is Dog Park and it has nothing to do with the dog shelter. I can really add pictures.
Thank you. So despite the slides and the children, Dog Park, we're only talking about the Dog Park. Right, that was very poor timing for you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't know we had pictures.
So at the outset, obviously, in favor of Dog Park, I think it's great, long overdue with a city of our size to have a dedicated Dog Park. I think one of the biggest benefits that we'll have of having a dedicated Dog Park in the city is that we can potentially enforce keeping dogs off of our other parks, which I hear from folks, my little one isn't in youth sports yet, but the damage that the dogs do to the digging up and leaving mess everywhere relative to youth sports fields is an issue. But so you want to improve the funding, the cost breakdown, can we go through that a little bit more detail?
Specifically, the Dog Park?
Just talking about the whole- Just Dog Park.
Okay.
So what's the cost of the Dog Park, soup, Dog Park soup to nuts?
Well, the Dog Park, again, soup to nuts is, the city's five hundred thousand dollars is going to pay for site work. That's site work to get in to the Dog Park.
I'm gonna go through it specifically, so the top, the top number is five hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so now tell me what that five hundred thousand specifically entails.
That gets a driveway into the Dog Park and it gets a level place to put the Dog Park as designed and paid for by other sources.
Right, just matching, two hundred thousand all matched for that?
It's not even a matching grant, it's just a grant.
So a roadway into the park, and what do you mean by flat space?
Well, looking at shelters, if this is sung better, okay. Can we add more? Okay.
That's why you guys pay your dead bucks, they're gonna charge us.
I know. Even on this slide, you can't see the full extent of the road coming in from the street. There's about eight hundred and fifty feet of road that has to come in from the street directly opposite the Italian American Club?
Sons of Italy.
Sons of Italy, thank you. So from basically the Sons of Italy front door, you have to go in off the back of the sidewalk, immediately turn right and then follow a long detention pond that was put there for the water treatment for the apartment buildings. So then you have to go in eight hundred and fifty feet from the sidewalk to get to the flat spot where these three half circles are that would be the actual three Dog Parks.
So what is that, what does that entail? So we take, we just clear that land, that's what those three little pockets are, we're just clearing land?
That area where those are is a filled area, so it's not even, it doesn't even have to be cleared. It has to be leveled.
How much does that cost?
Well, it would be, I would guess that the top part, right where the Dog Parks are going, would probably be about a hundred thousand dollars.
All right, I saw there's benches in there, right?
The benches should all be on the, they're being paid for by the grant.
So in terms of the city money, taxpayer money, what is the hundred thousand clearing, the five hundred thousand total? Hundred thousand clearing the land, the four hundred thousand is for the road?
Four hundred thousand is for a glorified driveway.
Right, so I guess we're driving it with, it's kind of a red flag when I heard the presentation previously, I think it was the Mayor did the presentation. You know, I was kind of looking at this plan thinking, you know, he had said a lot of the costs of the driveway. Let me take a step way back. My first six months on the council, in the first year, we had a hearing. It was Council of Forests and I proposed, we drafted a resolution calling from the city to create a Dog Park. We had hearings on it, I think we had a public safety committee or something. We had hearings on it to try and talk about putting it up in the Swingle Court where there's all that open space that's been filled in. It's a fact, you go up there, it's probably on ten, twelve acres, maybe a little less, just open space. People rock climb on the sides around it, nobody utilizes that middle bowl area. And the city has land out there. You know, DCR owns the land that Swingles is on, but it connects to a very large parcel that the city owns, which is all cleared and it's, I don't know if it was ever paved, but it's like gravel now that's used for exit parking. There's an existing parking lot there, an existing road. And that really didn't catch much traction with the park's director at the time in terms of moving forward with the Dog Park. When Avalon Bay was permitted, when they were going through the permitting process and we had public hearings up here and we debated this, it was this council that said, well, as yet, it may have been Council of Forests that said, well, with the land that connects to the city, the city owns land up there, is there potential for doing a Dog Park up there? And they said, yeah, that's something we would consider. And that was part of the mitigation that was discussed for Avalon Bay. And I specifically recall in meetings, and it was either the community meeting hosted by Councilor Cofflin at the time, or it happened up here, but they specifically said that what that entailed was granting the city easements across their land to access either the city land or in conjunction with some land that was unbuildable, unusable for their purposes. They would gift over to the city to bundle some land together to create a Dog Park. So we're now, what, I don't know, three years or more? I can't give you the exact date, but we're, it was 2014, so we're looking at three years from when that project was permitted, the Avalon Bay project. And I've asked for updates, okay, where are we at, where are we at? And I'm told it's coming along, it's coming along, and now we have it for us. And I'm incredibly surprised to see that the access doesn't go through the existing Avalon Bay is what was previously discussed, we're gonna use their roadway and then we're gonna grant us an easement around the back. And if this is the only, do you have other plans of this or is this the only plan we have? Is there something else that shows up aerial?
Yeah, the slide doesn't show the roadway.
No, no.
The hard copy, it doesn't much better show, of showing it than the slide perhaps.
Okay, thank you, Council of the Eye. All right, so that, I mean, that's a significant roadway.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you say, eight hundred and fifty feet. There are a lot of, just a little bit off the cuff, there are a lot of sections of eight hundred and fifty feet that I'd like to have paved in Woodford, this is Woodford Three, but, you know, we're creating something out of nothing here. There are some roadways that are in pretty tough shape that I'd like to subpay five hundred thousand dollars. But we are pretty close to their existing building right there and their property. I'm gonna imagine that there's gotta be a roadway or some sort of pathway that leads up to, up to these buildings here. Why would we not build a road that looks like it's like fifty feet? You know, maybe seventy-five feet here, using the easements that they promised to give us during the permitting process? Save four hundred thousand dollars in terms of the paving, we even drove back to the paving farm somewhere. But I guess I just don't understand, I get that we need to access the shelter there on the back end, but why are we not, rather than coming in off the quarry here, why are we not coming back around on Avalon Bay? Is that considered? Is there thoughts on that?
I asked the same question and was told that it wasn't, that there were no, that there were no easements and that it would be unlikely that permission would be given separate from an easement. Now, I don't know whether the easements that we're talking about were ever codified, ever put in the deeds. So that would be a big, that would be a huge question, yes. My, you know, when I go to look at that piece of property, I drive through their parking lot because that's the best way to get there.
And that's when they presented this and said most of the cost comes from having to pave access to it. That's what surprised me because my whole recollection of the conversation, what I came away with after discussing with Avalon Bay and the process was that they were gonna grant us easements, I actually thought that they were going to as part of mitigation potentially. Because they had said, oh, of course we would, we'd be, after we started discussing, of course we would be open to a Dog Park here, that's just an added amenity for our own residents. So, you know, they said, well, we just have to work out the legality of people crossing our land in order to get to a Dog Park, but, you know, we're okay with that. So, I don't know, maybe if we threw you to the mayor's representative, do you have anything to add to that in terms of-
No, I'm certainly happy to have a discussion with Avalon relative to going forward.
Okay. I mean, I, so I told you earlier, I was going through the special permit and I don't, I don't see it specifically codified in here, I'll have to, I'll have to pull the tape. I know it was mentioned during the hearings and relied upon prior to the vote, so, again, I want a Dog Park, so I, we're kind of splitting hairs here. When it comes to, when it comes to paving, eight hundred and fifty feet, we're better off paving the residential neighborhood that needs a new paving rather than paving our own new road to the site. Plus, not to mention that the Avalon Bay site, traffic-wise, is a lot safer for people to get in and out. You know, I mean, I'm gonna imagine we're gonna do an intersection here. It's just gonna be, people are gonna be, that section of quarry is coming around the blind curb. So I think this, certainly support the Dog Park, but I would like to explore this perhaps offline, a little more of the why. I mean, maybe a good reason, you know, maybe the lawyers couldn't work out a reasonable easement that protected everybody, I don't know, but certainly we should explore it. Thank you very much, please, excellent job.
Thank you, Council of Forests. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I should, I've been involved in the committee for the Dog Park since day one. My first campaign promise I made to my daughter was to get her dog, that's been fulfilled. Council of Forests, you do a point about the road construction, exactly the blind curb you mentioned is why it's coming in that way. We actually had had, I know Steve DeZroche had done some site work review, survey work for us, and that was one of the things, is how are we going to get access to the site? The site is a very difficult topography and you can kind of see the topo lines up on the map with the slide. So where you would be standing, when we did our site visits, when we brought in the Stand Foundation, when we brought in the architects, and as we did the different diligence for the project, we gained access to, through Avalon, the area was fenced off, but it is a difficult topography. So as we're looking at where they're gonna lay this out, the logistics, what the road and the location, and that's to be the understanding. And it couldn't come straight in off of quarry because of that blind curb we talked about. And the other thing is versus access tucking in the backside of Avalon, you know, you've been up on site, but if that aren't home, you are. You want that visibility from quarry street for ease when it is for the animal shelter, for animal control office, for the user to know where they're going. And it's difficult when you're up inside Avalon. So I think having twenty-two acres, getting the dogs out of the neighborhood into pet, much more pet-friendly amenities. I have to give a shout out to the animal shelter volunteers, many of which are here. I will tell you that an organization that is only fifteen years old, a nonprofit organization, has over a hundred and fifty active long tiers. And I really encourage my colleagues to connect with them and see how much they are doing to benefit our community. It's time for any animal shelter, it's time to give Quincy the amenities. I know myself, I walk my dog frequently at Bear Cove in Hangup. It's a five hundred acre site along the back river at Hangup. And the selectmen voted to change it from being pet-friendly to requiring on-leash. And so now they see their uses drop tremendously. So I hear from constituents of mine that they'd like to, why am I driving over the former bridge to Hangup to be able to walk my dog off-leash? It's too far, I want to be able to do this in my own home community. You know, the Blue Hills Reservation has some great walking paths, but those are technically on-leash. This body, actually because of the Stand Foundation, when we brought this grant forward, requires that your ordinance is allow dogs to be off-leash if they won't be fined your grants. So this body voted to allow by public recreation the opportunity for dogs to be off-leash. So I think that they have built many Dog Parks throughout our community. They're being able to leverage these funds with whatever else the site needs. They have some requirements, one is above water. We have to bring in, you know, infrastructure, whether it's for the shelter, for the park, and how we're able to combine those. So, you know, I'm thrilled to see this going forward. I think this is something that the citizens have been looking for. It takes pressure off parks and neighborhoods and I really appreciate this being included in the, to motel tax and it's not going on to the tax of the general fund or something. But we're utilizing other people's money, other people's money coming in to benefit, like we said earlier, all of the neighborhoods in the city in a master plan format. What are the park facilities we need, city block, so, thank you.
Thank you, Council of Forests, Council of the Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've owned dogs over my time, I currently own a dog right now. I've bred children, bred young children, so it's been very difficult. But again, I'm looking to get a little eagle, I always liked eagles as my, my little pet that I like for dogs. But anyways, you know, over the course of time, I think about what I have to go outside the city for. Unless I shop online, I gotta go outside the city to put a Braintree to shop for items like clothing and stuff. So, or I have to go to Hangup and Derby Street. When I think about the Dog Parks, I think about South Puss, I think about South. I used to frequent Carson Beach there by L Street, the beach area there. I used to see that nice, this is probably six, seven years old, the Dog Park there. And then, I mean, South Puss opened a new one over on M Street, O is its first street. So they've already opened two over there in that area. And what I see when I drive by or I see what's going on there is the community getting together. Talking about different breeds, people getting congregated together as well as if they can have kids. It's like, it's a nice centered area to kind of keep the community together. You know, you're talking, you know, I guess you'd call it dog jargon, you know, you're talking about different breeds, we can do this, you know, and I know there's a lot of pet, dog- Um, and I know there's a lot of pet, pet, you know, dog owners out there, and we saw tonight how many people came up here. So when you, you talk about needs and wants, I think this is, this far exceeds the needs. I, I think this is a great amenity for the city of Quincy, looking forward, and I think it's about time that we finally put this, these, these federal councils, and I have been on them, I have, kind of putting it forward. I think we need to look at the fact that, I think, some of the funding allocations are there now. Um, you know, some of the viewers out there don't necessarily understand this, Bond Council, Mr. Calhoun came in front of us some weeks ago. Um, it it seems like people are tuned in right now of QATV, they're tuned in right now with the newspapers, we're getting ready for the budget process. People are a little bit more in tune with what's going on, they might have pulled on the back, back burner, but, um, we we come to the conclusion that we have to bond, and I think we need to go back to that situation that we must bond because we wanna keep our double A plus rating and all these other things, so we must bond someday. So I think we're in a situation right now where we can bond these type of items. And I, and I feel that with the activists that were here tonight, the need is there. You know, I think we need to point that out, that, um, Bond Council's coming in front of us, Mr. Calhoun's coming in front of us. And so we have an allocated amount of funding that we can bond now. Um, we're getting stuff off the books, right, um, the exact amount, a little over five percent, we have some pushing to do it right now, and this is the time to bond. So when people talk about, "We're gonna get into budget process, and we're gonna talk about taxes, and, and what will be the appropriations for different things, this is an area that we, finally that we can fit some things in, and this is the time to fit it in." So with that, I'm gonna be in support of this dog park, thank you.
Uh, so Councilman Franz? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Franz, thank you, and I'm just gonna, um, you know, note that the budget provided in terms of the twenty fifty thousand dollars, expenditure of that was, you know, fairly good picture of that. But I do have to admit that, to a certain degree, I mean, it does get a little confusing when we talk about the five hundred thousand. And I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be possible to, um, construct this into the total pro forma, so to speak, that would include in your twenty fifty thousand? That five hundred thousand that's specifically laid out broken out by those line items, what? The costs are associated with site preparation, the actual grade, all of those things. Um, I'm sure somebody in the mayor's office can help you with that a little bit, that gives a good picture of that. The second thing is, as you made from the beginning, you made it clear that this is, um, separate from the shelter, but in some respects, if you even look at the map, it seems to me that there's gonna be some intersection there. And again, I know we're dealing with that separately, and it's got to be, um, planned, but it seems to me like, particularly when it comes to parking and different things like this, and the design, that there could be some offsets one way or the other, I would think. And I don't know if you've made, I guess, Mr. Walker, or through you, Mr. Chairman, if you have any of the same relation to that?
Just, just briefly, Councilor Franz, Mr. Chairman, um, the dog park can be built independently without the shelter taking place. There is definitely an interchange, if we get to the point where the shelter is approved, um, you would see some difference in the access points. You would see some additional infrastructure built into those access points, um, up to around this driveway and parking area. We'd be talking about different kinds of infrastructure that would be needed to service the building itself. But one doesn't mean you can't have the other, you can't have a dog park there without having a shelter there. Probably wouldn't have a shelter there without a dog park.
I think I got that. But the the main thing with this is that, that this does, gives a greater breakout with the twenty fifty, but to the extent that we can do as a total of the seven fifty, and you can break out a little bit what justifies my goal for the five hundred, that would be, that would be helpful. And again, I do support the concept, and, uh, and you can add that further enhanced by the number of people here to to speak about it this evening. But, uh, again, that'd be helpful. Thank you so much, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, my pleasure, Councilor. Any further questions from Mr. Franz? Just in terms of like, one thing I chatted with Mr. Walker, and he had mentioned miscellaneous fault, miscellaneous part piece that we're gonna uncover.
Yeah.
Just to go back to some additional backup for that, and I guess we'll take that out at the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting, which is the twenty-fourth. Um, so I'll just kind of end with a funny story, I guess. First of all, Lisa, I want to thank you for your advocacy, I know you put a lot of work into this, and all the, um, volunteers, right, right, with the animal shelter that came here uh, this evening to advocate, right, 'cause that's what this forum is about, this list of public input. And I hear that, uh, you know, Councilman, I'm talking about a Vigo, I actually grew up with a Vigo, I remember, um, he's obviously no longer with us, but I remember the, uh, integral role that he played in the house, it was almost like he was, uh, I mean, he was the go-to with pets, uh, some instances versus others. And I've always been a dog owner, currently we don't, I don't have a dog, but I have an eighteen-month-old. And, uh, my wife is carrying, you know, our second child to be delivered, uh, on willing in August, but every time we say to Patrick, we say, "Patrick, where's, where's the baby?" And he turns and he looks and he points and he goes, "Puppy." So, boy, is he in for a rude awakening. With that, I would like to, uh, close the Finance Committee meeting, and, uh, thank you.